All right, bring it in.
Yes, sir.
All right, good evening, everybody. Glad you're here. It's April the 12th, 2016, so 7:00. Let's get this meeting underway. So we'll recognize groups or individuals, anybody that you'd like to speak. So many hands. And receive input from the public. Bids, contracts, proposals, service requests. It's the fire apparatus proposal, and I will let, Chief, I'll let you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Being relatively new, one of the things I want to do is assess our fire apparatus and firefighting capabilities. And we put together a committee of personnel to kind of look into it a little further, to see what we felt would be the immediate needs to best serve the city. When we look at it, the oldest piece of equipment we have is the ladder truck. It's a 1988 ladder truck that was purchased, actually used, from Newtown, Pennsylvania. So, you know, it, at the time that it was constructed, the standards were not as stringent as they are now. And it's just like everything else with technology, things have improved. That particular truck, while we still use it, one of our biggest concerns is the safety factor. The standards changed in 1991 to strengthen the amount of weight and so forth that those aerial ladders can support. The aerial ladder we have now is rated at what they call tip, which is at the very end, how much weight you can support, and it's rated for 400 pounds. The standards allow for one firefighter fully outfitted with an air tank on their back, they allow 250 pounds for that. So that only gives you 150-pound margin of error if you have a victim that you need to rescue. So I don't know, we don't carry scales around to say, "You're too big, step aside," and the little people come first. But if there are safety overrides, it will not allow it to be overloaded. So that's one issue. The other issue is it has the pump capacity, which is the amount of water it will produce is 1,250 gallons per minute. Most newer apparatus will produce 2,000 gallons per minute. So once again, it's almost double. Going back, I forgot to tell you, the newer apparatus, the tip loading is 750 pounds. So it's almost double of what the current ladder truck is now. So 750 pounds, that gives you enough margin for two firefighters plus a victim. The other issue is the amount of water that it carries. The current ladder truck has 200 gallons, and a newer truck, they can carry up to 500 gallons of water. So when we looked at feasibility, obviously, these types of apparatus are very pricey. They're very expensive. The original budget that had been prepared was an allowance for a fire engine and equipment for the fire engine. When we look at the fire station itself, and if you've been in there, you know we have a severe height restriction. We only have two bays that are above 10-foot in height, and the travel height of a lot of those trucks are 11-foot or plus. So that restricts us into the type of truck that we can actually fit in the fire station without replacing a truck. So when we take all those factors into consideration, we felt like the best avenue for the city, the best investment of our money, is to purchase a ladder truck to replace the one that we bought used from Newtown, Pennsylvania. That is more than what's currently budgeted, and I've talked to Councilman Simpson before, and one of his things is show me the money. And so to offset the difference in the price of what a new truck would cost versus what we have budgeted, by replacing that truck, we can turn around and sell that truck on the used market to a department that may be smaller, serving a smaller community, but they have the need for an aerial device, for an elevated stream more so than for rescue The other part of it, we have some line items, as I spelled out to you, in our current budget that we're well under what the projected budget was. So the asking price, or list price, for most of these trucks are going to be between $800, $850,000. Most of the vendors that we have talked to have said that if we pay, prepay, or pay before we take delivery of the truck, because they're saving money in the interest, they will discount that price drastically, sometimes $20,000 to $25,000 off of that. Plus, most salesmen, like every other salesman, works on commission, so they will get in competition with each other to cut their commission some to get the sale of truck. So all that being said, what we are asking for tonight is permission to advertise a RFP, a request for proposals from vendors, for trucks that are already out there on the market, because, once again, because they are demonstratory units or already in production units, sometimes they will discount the price of that as well. Because typically, they will build these trucks, matter of fact, we have one come by today, they take it around, show them the different fire departments so you can see what their truck looks like. And because they have a little bit of road mileage on them, they will sometimes discount the price over going out and buying one brand-new built to your specification. The other reason we want to do that is to expedite things so that we're in our current fiscal year, so we don't have to worry about trying to adjust the budget, which I know we're coming up on rapidly for the next fiscal year. We had four members of the truck committee that traveled and looked at some different fire trucks, some of them that couldn't bring, some here, so they traveled and looked at them, and they have, you know, pretty much stated in depth as to what they think is the best safety needs. And that committee consisted of two, excuse me, three paid firefighters and two volunteer firefighters. So what we would ask for tonight is to advertise a request for proposals. Once we, if that was approved, once we submitted and advertised and got proposals in, my recommendation would be to let the guys on that committee review each one of the vendor's submittals to see what, because each one's going to be a little different as far as, one may submit a 500-horse engine, another may submit a 525-horse engine. That may or may not be a critical factor in our decision, but that's one thing that could make a difference. It could be a Detroit or a Cummins, for example. And we're going to look at maintenance issues and long-term investment for the city. This type of purchase will serve the city for probably the next 25 years. Because as you can see, the current truck we have now is an 88. Yes, sir.
Are you finished?
Yes, go right ahead.
I have probably two pages of questions. I wish we had a, had a call safety committee meeting to discuss this, and since it is on agenda, I will have to ask you some questions.
Sure, feel free.
You had some indication in your letter, 400 pounds, was that water dry?
That is dry.
That is dry?
Yes, sir.
That 88 truck, tip load is 400 pounds?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And I have it, I brought the manual with me, and I highlighted the page that says that.
Okay. Well, anyway, I have some questions I need to ask you.
Sure.
Since it's on the agenda, but like I indicated, I wish you had a call to safety committee meeting because I'd like to ask you some questions.
I'm saying, I apologize, I had a visit in the family, and so I apologize.
Right, okay.
To you, Senator.
Okay. I have many questions. I have received many complaints from city taxpayers. They question me, what is the reason they see these big trucks riding around in the city with no farm? And we're in town. And they asked me a question, who was paying for those trucks? I told them taxpayers were paying for those trucks. And get down to the new truck, my opinion, the city should purchase a good-use truck. I am against a new truck spending almost a million dollars of taxpayer money for a new truck.
Can the public respond to that?
Okay, let me finish this first, and you can find. ISOs had issues with this new design truck. Did you know, were you aware of that?
Who's that?
ISO.
ISO, I'm familiar with ISO.
Had issues with this new, it's a new design truck.
ISO has no issues with this truck. It meets all the standards.
I know, I understand all that, but it's...
Right, well, ISO, ISO does a right fire truck.
No, they had issues with it, I saw.
Oh, yeah. Oh, sure. Well, I didn't tell you that.
Well, I can show it, I can show it to you.
Sure, I'd be more than happy.
I mean, I don't have it present, I show.
I'd be more than happy to see it, because I...
Okay. And my next question, do the city fire department needs a new truck at this current time?
Do we imply, I'm sorry?
Do city fire department need a new fire truck at this current time? My next question, would this new fire truck guarantee decreased ISO and property owner fire insurance taxes? And also, we have three pumper trucks.
Now, we don't have two, sir.
We got two?
Yes.
I thought we had three.
Yes, sir, there's two pumbers.
Well, we got one with 105 ladders, and you got...
Right, it's a ladder truck, it's not a pumper truck.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So anyway, they all has passed ISO inspection.
Well, ISO doesn't inspect trucks. I don't know where you got that.
I mean, how do you get the, how do you get the rating ISO? When they come here and inspect all equipment, what do they inspect?
They are looking for ladder tests and pump tests of that particular piece of equipment, and the equipment that you carry on there, and that you respond that truck to the same. For example, you all flew a tanker truck last year.
Right.
You get no ISO credit for that truck. Okay? Whereas a ladder truck, you do get credit for if it responds on every building alarm. And since I've been chief, we have implemented that. That was not the case before I became chief. NFPA sets the standards. ISO is a rating bureau. ISO doesn't, they don't enforce anything. They simply come in and grade your community's ability to provide fire protection. NFPA is the one that sets the standards as far as turnout gear, breathing apparatus, fire hose, fire nozzles, and fire apparatus. You can't sell a truck unless it meets the NFPA standard. As far as a used truck, we looked at used trucks on the market, and the problem is to get one that's less than 10 years old, with probably less than 30,000 miles on it, we're going to spend $500,000 or $600,000. And you can go to many websites and look at trucks that are for sale. So for $500,000 or $600,000, you're buying somebody else's truck that they got rid of for whatever reason, versus buying a new truck that comes with warranties, that you get no warranty on a used truck. And you're not buying maybe someone else's headaches, in my opinion. When you, when you go to buy a piece of fire apparatus, once again, you have to look at, because when the current ladder truck was purchased, even though it met the standards at the time it was built in 1988, it doesn't meet the standards now. So whoever was in charge when they purchased that truck, they didn't realize that the tip loading is way different than it is from a truck manufactured after 1991. And to me, safety of the firefighters and our citizens is more important than anything. It's more important than the dollar. And so I would not want to, and I sent you a picture of an aerial ladder that had failed. It looked like a twisted pretzel laying on the ground. I would not want that on my conscience at night, knowing that if I put a firefighter on that ladder, and they go to rescue a victim, and that ladder collapses, that we could have avoided that with a, with a newer standard truck. Also, I'm going to start...
Let me ask you this. I'm a fireman, and I'm fully dressed, I weigh about 220 right now.
Yes, sir.
Fully dressed, with my apparatus, breathing apparatus, what will, what will I come in at?
Your total year allowance is going to be about 40 pounds, so 260, 270.
270.
So we're in that ballpark.
So I assume that I have, and I'm going to rescue Mr. Buckman. I'm going to have to, is it safe for me to do that? At, at the maximum level that may require that rescue, do you think this truck is unsafe?
I think it's unsafe to do that in that scenario. And here's the problem...
Well, I got to show Mr. Buckman a bottle of water, say, hope for the best, and see...
Well, no, here's the problem. The firefighter will put their life at jeopardy at risk to serve another.
Oh, I know what you're doing.
And that's, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm trying to prevent. May never happen. You know, I have health insurance, homeowner's insurance, automobile insurance, I hope I never have to use any of it. But I can't sleep at night without knowing I have those things in place. And this is the same way when it comes to firefighter and public citizen safety, in my opinion.
Right. But you think that that truck is unsafe to use, to rescue?
I think, I think in that scenario, absolutely, that if you have a firefighter and a victim that's over 150 pounds, then now we're in a situation where it could be jeopardizing on the health and safety of the firefighter, but also the victim, because of the ladder strength.
I don't know who's under 150 pounds anymore.
I have, I know I'm not, so...
Let me show you something, Chief. This truck here, is that a pumper truck?
Uh, yes, sir, that's a fire engine, but it won't fit in the fire station. Oops.
Well...
See, if you want to buy that truck and try to back it in the fire station, we're going to break the whole top of it off, because we're within our price.
Okay. Anyway, I have been all over Internet, and they have many used trucks.
That's correct.
And that 88 truck was a used truck.
That's correct.
That truck, that 20 years old.
That's correct.
And sometimes this new stuff is not what it's supposed to be, you know?
That's correct.
And...
But a new truck comes with a warranty.
I understand all that, I understand all that, that's pretty clear, but from what I'm getting at, we have many used trucks, and I've been all over Internet, I have not located no used truck, the price you indicating, $500,000 or $700,000. Most of the used trucks on Internet, they are under $300,000.
No ladder truck, not one that's less than 10 years old, you won't find.
I've, I've been all over Internet.
I have too, I've looked at everything.
Show me, I mean...
And here's, here's what I'm telling you, is y'all hired me to do your fire station.
I understand it.
Okay, so I think my job is to advise you all, what is in the best interest of the city.
Right.
I'm not going to advise you something, if you give me a little red wagon of water and say, "Fight fire with it," I'll do it.
Right.
I'm not going to be very effective, but that's what I'll do. I'm trying to guide you in what I feel and what the committee of firefighters feels is in the best interest of all the citizens of Bardstown and our firefighter safety.
And let me tell you my position. My job is to represent all taxpayers.
Absolutely.
Three wives put me in the seat, and I understand your job. And, and I'm going to represent taxpayers and...
Councilman Lidian, if you don't mind, can we move this on and let Councilman Bobby Simpson have it?
Well, wait, I'll finish. If I finish, let me move on, because I have rights on the floor. So anyway, that's my opinion, okay? All right.
Mayor, I don't need to, I think I was going to ask one last question.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you. Safety is very important, and I understand where you're coming from. I've heard about the weight issue and the pumping capacity for the water. You said that, because the question I had written down originally was why you were submitting a request for a new fire truck in this year's budget, but you said we're under budget. Do you know how much we're under budget? And being that you're coming in and you're taking a look at everything, the whole picture, can you see anything else that's going to come up? Like, you know, are we going to see something within the next three months that, hey, you know, we need to address this? I mean, are you going to do a comprehensive look at the whole unit so that we don't have to keep nitpicking with what we may need or what have you? Because, you know, this is a lot of money. So if you could just give me some information, I totally understand where you're coming from, but it's just, you know, we're coming up on a new budget too. So what else are we going to need? How much are we under budget?
Right. The, the last printout that I had was as of the end of February, I ain't got March's printout yet. We were at, we had spent 40%, 40.46% of our budget.
Chief, I'll go ahead and submit this to the council.
Okay, thank you for that.
Oh, they, they should have it.
Okay. But anyhow, that's where we were on our budget as of the end of February. And as far as a plan, absolutely, I'm a huge believer in short and long-term planning. And the reason this came up is we had money budgeted for a fire apparatus in this year's budget already. But in looking at it, if we, because we're so constrained by the size of building that we're in height-wise and length-wise, there are very few apparatus manufacturers that can build a new truck that will fit in there, and to do that, it takes about 13 months. So if we ordered a truck in May, we wouldn't see it until probably June or July of next year. I think there's an immediate need in looking at the apparatus that we have now, not only from safety, but also from maintenance. Every time the ladder truck gets tested, there's issues with the torque box and the hydraulic system. And this last January, we spent about $4,000 just in repairing the hydraulic system. And so it's kind of like, put a Band-Aid on, put a Band-Aid on, and so forth. But getting back to the plan, absolutely, I'd be more than happy to submit a five-year plan, you know, three, five, however many years that you all would think would be appropriate. I know you can't encumber another council, but at least you would have an idea of what our vision through the fire department is for protection of our citizens, because I'm not being derogatory, I'm just saying that we are woefully behind where we should be, in my opinion. And I've been doing this for 35 years. And when I, when I look at, I know there has been discussion, that's Public Safety Committee, about a fire police building. That is definitely something that needs to be done for multiple reasons. For us, it's space, but it's also, going back to Councilman Lidian's talking about ISO, that is one thing ISO will certainly look at, and that's what we call distribution. And they want to see a fire station, ideally, I understand this is in a perfect situation. A mile and a half, that every piece of property would have a fire engine within a mile and a half driving radius. That becomes a very pricey proposition, because brick and mortar is very expensive. We would probably need two more fire stations to give adequate coverage, but that can't be fixed in next year's budget or the year after next budget. That goes back to the plan you're referring to, and I wholeheartedly submit that that's, that's the way we need to be going. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Councilman Simpson, go ahead.
Well, I want to start off with, I've got several questions, but like you said, show me the money.
Yes.
And so I've been looking at the budget that we've all got here, and I had a question, and you may not be answering this...
Yes, sir.
...tonight without...
I'll try my best.
But the technical supplies, what, what, where does that fit into the...
That was what the original, my understanding of what the original budget was, was $625,000 for a fire engine, as part of that money. The rest of it was going to be to equip that truck, because it was going to be an additional pumper. If we use the ladder truck, we'll take all the equipment off of it to put on, because they don't come equipped, they come stripped down pretty much with the exception of some real basic items. So instead of using that money for a pumper and equipment, we could apply all that money towards just the truck, because we would have the equipment and surplus, not surplus, but already in use.
So, so that 150,000 plus the 730,000 would cover it without messing with the, what, you still may have to do something with the voluntary?
That's correct. And, and we feel certain that we can put that truck on either Gov. Deals or a vendor's site and recover some of our investment that has already been made in that truck, as far as, it may be 75,000, I don't know what it's going to bring until we put it out there for sale. But from estimates we've got, we've heard, some people say 100,000, I think that's maybe a little aggressive, in my opinion, but...
That's another part of it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's on that. But, and I understood the way you explained the ISO, you know, you've got to understand where we're coming from.
Sure, sure.
Every time we've done something with fire department, boy, your insurance is going down, ISO.
Right.
Well, you know, I haven't seen it.
And you're correct.
And so, but my question is on that, is if we keep the truck, is, will it help us with the ISO?
ISO, this particular purchase, to be specific, would not change the ISO rating just by purchasing this truck, no, sir.
But if we keep the one that we've got, that's not going, and we're going to be lucky to get whatever we can get out of it, because if it's unsafe, and I want to touch on that, I don't think there's anybody in this room that wants to send these boys up in an unsafe condition.
Right, right.
So don't, don't think, because that's where we're at. And then really, I guess we're glad that we found out that it won't bring a fireman and somebody else down. But by keeping that truck, you don't think that would affect the ISO at all?
ISO, we have two issues. You only get a part of a point for what they call a reserve or backup truck. So we wouldn't get full credit for it, keeping it. The bigger issue is we're out of space. We don't have any place to put it. See what I'm saying? There's only two bays, the two on the Broadway side, that are tall enough to accommodate a full-height truck. The other trucks we have in the other bays, we actually, wait for I was here, they actually had to take the light bars and knock the legs off of them just to get it where it wouldn't hit the beams of the roof in the, in the fire station.
Well, now that comes my next question.
Okay. I think I'm reading your mind, I guess, sir.
You must have...
Tell, I, I cheated.
But now, this, when you put this bid out, is it going to fit our truck? I mean, fit our, our bay?
Absolutely.
Or is it going, we're going to have to park it outside until we get a...
No, that's, that's, that's a good point, is that it would have to go where the ladder truck currently sits now, so that ladder truck would have to go. For example, if you look, as, as the councilman did, at some of those websites, you can say, selling this truck, but you can't take delivery of it until we get our truck. So in other words, if XYZ Fire Department bought the ladder truck we have now, the stipulation would be, they don't get their truck until we get our truck. So then they write a check and drop off into the sunset, and we would put our new truck inside the building.
That's my question.
But what you need to also, I think, stress, is that not the same truck that did stress welding on fractures or cracks?
I think Ernie, Ernie, he's been here a lot longer than I. He lost Ernie Piles, one of our firefighters, on the truck committee, and I think pretty much every time it gets tested, there are stress fractures that need to be welded as well.
Yes, we have a professional welder, we have a professional welder come in every year after ladder testing, and they have to weld stress cracks in the torque box, as Chief mentioned earlier, every year, since we've had the truck.
Okay. Just, hey, if you'd like to, if anybody's get a chance, please?
Okay. I didn't, I didn't see you paying, okay.
Oh, yeah, a question. This volunteer fire department fees, what, what is that?
That is where we reimburse our volunteers for training and fire responses they come to. I believe in looking historically at past budgets, I wasn't here, that number was based when it was a joint corporation, you know, before it split.
Okay.
I think they had, last year, last fiscal year, they spent 67,000 on volunteer fees.
Okay.
Now there's one now in the city that has decreased.
Okay, and I'm going to ask, I think, the same question that Bobby asked, but maybe in a different way. The, the equipment that we are not going to buy, let's just speak generically, in general terms, the equipment we're not going to buy in order to buy this new ladder truck, if we do, are we putting that off or are we eliminating that, that cost?
We're eliminating the cost, because we'll be, for lack of a better word, recycling or reusing the equipment we have now.
So back kind of to Keisha's point, that's not going to come around next year and get it back on the budget again?
No, sir. Not with that truck, absolutely not.
And, okay, I'm done.
Councilman, Buckman, I know you had yours up, and then I have you.
Bobby cares, covers a lot of them, but last year, on the budget, we appropriated, we already had 731,000 and changed for a new truck.
Yes.
And if we sell the old truck, and... And if we sell the old truck and, which is money for the firefighter, we can buy a new truck with a warranty and move on with it and have long service out of it. So why are we looking at a used truck?
That would be my question, Phil. Yes, sir.
We got the money for a new truck, we just stick with the new truck.
Well, I'm going.
Councilman, Councilman Williams?
The question I have is, obviously, if we try and get something that fits within the confines of what we have, has to be specially made or whatever.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I'm just thinking outside the box here, would it be feasible to alter the height of the roof in the Fire Department as a temporary stopgap to deal with this issue?
I think, and.
I'll answer that.
I was going to say.
They dumbed out once, they went inside and altered that roof to the maximum that they can to still be structurally safe, and they can't do anything else to it. Now, because I thought of the same thing, Councilman Williams, and it can't do it.
I know they, as the mayor said, it had been altered with a different column to catch one end of the building, and then it's got another pitch going down the way, so they, there's about a two-foot or so height differential on the two end bays. To remodel the other ones, personally, I'm not a construction person, I think it'd be a very pricey proposition, in my opinion, but that's, you know, without pricing it, I couldn't tell you.
If you wanted to make that, that chair completely off, you start up from scratch.
So the sand could be said for adding an additional bay onto the building, let's say on the Fifth Street side? If we were to go to the Fifth Street side and put an addition on, but have a higher roof?
But, but you could do that, but what the cost of that would be, and then you have to look at, at the issues of when those trucks are pulled in, what we're having is, we don't have the showers. I think the, I'll be with the people that do this study, is when firemen come back from fires, they should and have to take the showers because the, the smoke and what, what they go through. And firemen have the highest rate of cancer in almost any other occupation. It's occupational hazard, that's it.
The state legislature just passed this, this decision, just passed the Cancer Bill, and, and that's because of the high essence of, because of what the guys are exposed to, and they come back, and right now, with the facility we're in here, we have one shower, and we'll have, not including just the paid guys, which can be eight at a time, because then you bring the volunteers in on top of it, so now you may have twenty people, and we got one shower. And it.
And the, you see, I know one of the volunteers don't believe getting their personal bills and go home and have that in their vehicles, and then they have their turnout gear that they have to wash and sanitize also.
That's right.
So we're, we're really, you know, we're really behind the times in that aspect. Then the other thing is, if we hire a, a female firefighter, we're going to be in a real big trip bag, if you want to put it that way, because we have to meet those accommodations also, and there are three women that are looking to, to come aboard. So what do we do then?
Okay, well, I understand all that, and so I, he went into more detail, and I already knew about the other things, but I'll just think in terms of.
Right, space for that truck, I understand, Councilman, I do. And like I say, if you were asking my opinion, I would say it's probably not feasible, but once again, I'm not a construction person, so I couldn't give a professional opinion on that, but no worries.
Well, just, I have to do my due diligence and.
Sure.
I have another question. I want Buckman to do the math with me. Look at the line item in the tech equipment. If you buy this new truck and hope that you get seventy-five thousand dollars for this new truck, it's not guaranteed.
No, sir, it's not.
I'm going to say if you get, do math with me.
What I done in that?
If you do seventy-five thousand dollars for a truck and buy this new truck, you have, you almost wipe out this line item. You won't have one thousand seven hundred dollars left. And if, and if you do not sell this truck for seventy-five, you have a big deficit in the Fire Department, if you do the math.
But, but we still have.
I mean.
But we still have other line items.
Well, you got down a line of eight thousand dollars, but that's not going to cover everything because if you don't get seventy-five thousand, it's not guaranteed, you might not give a thirty thousand dollars for that truck. So if you don't give a thirty thousand, that's forty, fifty thousand dollars a deficit in the, in the budget.
In that line item.
I mean, well, I won't be in this line, I'm a, it will be a deficit at the bottom line in the budget. It will, it will be, I'm on a no math, it'll be a deficit. So get back, if you do the math, you look this way, and you look this way, you could have a deficit. You'll wipe out that account, we got three more months to go, and you may need some more equipment, right?
No.
I mean, you, guarantee you don't need no more tech equipment in the next three months, and I guarantee, you never know what some might have.
I can't imagine having some of that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. But, I mean, you don't take chances like that. You always, you never like to take chances like that because you, you need something back there just in case.
I thought the money was budgeted, so it would be you.
Well, I mean.
So we sit there like.
It do not indicate, it do not indicate in there just for this truck. I mean, it covers many aspects in the Fire Department. And to get to my other question, when you said that ISO had something to do with the building, we've been very mislaid. I thought when we get this twenty-four fire department, our ISO would go down.
That's a part of it.
But we, my ISO hasn't gone down.
If, I, I, I used to work for ISO.
I know.
So I think I can speak with some authority in that, in that thing. ISO rating covers a multi, it's not just staffing, it's not just trucks. It's our water system, it's our dispatch, it's everything that comes into play. So adding career people, will it help your ISO? Absolutely, I can say one-hundred percent.
Is it?
Yes, it will. Because career staff versus volunteer staff, ISO gives much more credit to career staff. It's not that we don't have great volunteers, we do, and I cherish every one of them, but ISO realizes at three o'clock in the morning, they have to get up, get dressed, drive to the fire station, get the fire truck, then go to the fire. With a full-time crew, that takes that away. So the time, fire doesn't sit there in idle mode waiting on you to get there, it grows and grows and grows exponentially. So the ISO rating is, and that goes back to Councilman Copeland's about a plan, and I applaud her for saying that because that's the only way you're going to overcome the ISO rating is with a plan. You can't piecemeal like his, you can't go out and say, I'm going to buy a tanker and lower the ISO. I'm going to go out and hire one extra person, lower the ISO. That doesn't work. It's a, it's an all-encompassing survey, it's not just one issue. And there are many issues. Fire stations, staffing, hydrants and water systems, training, dispatch, there's, there's a myriad of things that the, that the ISO survey looks at. Fire apparatus is one piece of that.
I know.
One piece of it. So I think the Councilman Buckman asked that question, is will this, buying this truck will lower the ISO rating? No. Buying this one truck will not in itself lower the ISO.
Completely, totally, it's up front.
It will not. Buying any truck won't do that. Buying any truck will not in itself lower your ISO.
Taxpayer, we've been mislaid, and I'm, we need more, it's first like, educate them.
Oh, I.
Probably, and taxpayer, I mean, we do all this stuff.
Absolutely. And we can bring somebody by.
We get all the feedback.
Absolutely.
And my intention, not to put you on a hot seat, but.
Oh, no, no.
My intention to represent all taxpayer.
And, and here's my, here's, I said, I've ended this long time, here's my view on it, is you're in that seat to ask me the hot seat questions. Because you're representing everybody, and if I can't justify it to you all, then it doesn't make sense to the average citizen. So I, I wholeheartedly agree with you.
Okay, go to Councilman Simpson, go ahead.
Well, I think what you're asking for is permission to send out the bids for at least specific, I think we've got a specification.
Yes, sir.
In the computer.
Yes, sir.
And so if it would be in order.
Yes, it is.
I would make a motion that we give a permission to ask for bids with these conditions and things that's in the computer. I don't, I can't read all those.
Just, you want to make a motion to approve them to do a fire apparatus purchase proposal?
Correct, what?
All right, do I have a second?
I second.
All right, discussion?
Mayor, can I assume from your comments that your opinion is that we should do this?
Well, let me ask you this. You've got three firemen here, what is their life worth? I have, I, when that truck was tested, I sat out there, it did not hold its, its weight, it did not hold the welding that's taken place, in my opinion, absolutely. Because that's, what by you do, do you place on these three guys?
Also, maybe I should understand that this is just to solicit bids, it's not.
It's not to purchase, it's just to get a bid.
At the end of that, you all could reject all bids.
Yes.
And not purchase a, a piece of equipment.
And I think, and to add to that, I think that the fire chief sat there and actually validated in the other. By my power, excuse me, just a minute, please.
You're not a question, man, you're out of order. If you have a motion on the floor, you're out of order, man.
Councilman Lidian, we're in discussion, sir.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So anyway, according to the chief and fireman Powell back there, they stated that they felt that the truck is unsafe. Now, Councilman Lidian, go right ahead, sir, we're in discussion still.
I've got what I was going to say.
Okay, let's move on. I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Simpson, second by Councilman Buckman. All in favor?
Uh-uh.
Those opposed?
No.
Ms. Copeland, how did you vote?
Uh, this is for, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Five to one. Motion's adopted. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Let's go to number four. The DRB 229, five-star development of Alabama Incorporated.
The Development Review Board recommended approval of DRB 229, five-star development of Alabama, installing a 12,900-square-foot retail commercial building at 90 West John Rowan Boulevard, Kentucky 245. The approval was based on the submitted building site landscaping and lighting plans with the conditions specified.
Well, I guess I'll.
I'm turning the motion. Well, I was going to, go ahead.
Well, I was going to open the discussion.
Before the motion?
Well, if it's.
Well, make the motion, then we'll discuss.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we table the DRB 229 until the settlement of the lawsuit regarding the property.
Councilman Hayden has a motion on the floor.
I second it.
Discussion?
Uh, yeah, my, my proposal, I don't think there's any hurry on this, since the building's still there, there's still, there's a business there, and I understand we're not, we're not involved in that, but rather than muddying the water of us approving the plans for a building that it seems is pretty far out in the, in the, in the distance, if we, I don't see any harm in waiting until we, until that is settled and then come back and visit it.
Here, here's the, I asked the question of Jan Johnston Crowe. You know, Town and Country is, is by their attorney, has asserted and made known that they have a long-term lease on this property, and the owner has submitted this request, and so you have competing rights, I believe it's, if it's not in litigation, it's going to be in litigation. The question I had was, is that given the fact that there would be a delay between approval from this board, if you so approve, and when something might actually happen, would there be a chance that, that that approval would expire or become moot somehow? You know, in other words, it would go, grow stale, and they'd have to go back through the process again. Jan assured me that the answer to that is no, that it would be there waiting. Now, should the bank prevail, it would become moot because there's nothing, there wouldn't be anything to approve. I had similar concerns, but that allayed my concern when she said that it would be waiting, they're waiting for them when litigation was resolved. My, my concern was, quite frankly, that you approve something, a year and a half from now, litigation is complete, they're ready to go, and you have a higher or different standard or something like she said.
That was my, you know, that's my point, is if something changed, you know, in our regulations or.
By tabling it, it wouldn't, we'd have to act on the one that was on the table. We wouldn't be able to send it back through.
But is anything out if we approved it? I mean, if.
There's nothing, there's nothing that would, in my opinion, there's nothing that would keep you from approving it, understanding that it might not happen because of litigation.
But if we approved it, I'm going to repeat what you said, if we approved it, and then a year from now, or two years from now, it finally gets resolved and it gets the building, and in the meantime, the design standards have changed. So now, now the plan we've approved is no longer current.
Right. But, but we could only act on the proposal, if you table it, we can only act on the proposal that they, we have on the table. So it's six of one, half dozen of the other, we can't send it back.
But our, but our, but our discussion two years from now could be, standards have changed, therefore, could we not, not, could we not disapprove the plans based on new standards?
I don't think so. I don't think so. I don't think you can, I don't, that's, that's the, you can't like enact a moratorium that is retroactive.
Yeah.
Kind of a thing. No, you, it would have to be, you'd have to either deny it, if you wanted to do that, you'd have to deny it, and I'm not sure what the basis would be for denial.
Right, there would be no basis for denial if the standards, what you're using with the old ones.
But these exact concerns are what I expressed to Jan, and Jan did not have that as a concern. That was exactly, you're handing glove with what I was thinking, is that, are we somehow taking an action that's futile or will come back to haunt us?
Okay.
And she said no.
So I.
And I trust that what she's saying is correct, I'm not.
Well, I was, I was seeing, Marvin, actually approving the DRB regulations and to, to hold that.
Well, my only, my thoughts were just that if we waited, if we approved it, and then two years from now, then it's over, and then standards have changed, there's another property there, maybe residents have moved in, and, and things have changed, that we would not want to approve. What you're saying is, we couldn't, we couldn't disapprove it based on new standards.
No.
Well, that's.
You can't table it until you enact new standards, no.
But you know, it might open up another process of legal complication of making those standard changes, could you? And by approving it today, would, would we not stop that?
I'm sorry, mayor, say it again.
If we don't approve, and we, and we table it, and, and we, we go, and I feel very trustful to them, that, that can't change the standards. But let's just say that we didn't approve it, and then two years down the road, this thing is solved, and then we approve it, and then another litigation comes open about, well, the, the standards has changed, now we're in, we're in this again. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So if we approve it, it's not, the standards stay the same regardless, and then let them fight the legal issue out in court on who gets the building and who goes where and what?
Well.
And, and the design standards are already there and voted in.
Well, if the design standards.
You, you follow me?
Well, I, I follow what he said. I'm sorry, mayor, I follow what he said.
But what I'm saying, if, if we don't pass it at all, and the design standards changes in two years, as you say, may change hypothetically, it changes. Okay? Now, it's been tabled, and we have to go by, the, the development crew has to go by the new standards, but if, if we vote on it now, it locks those in for sure, and it doesn't, it, it wouldn't cause another litigation down the road between the development review standards and all. They could come up.
I think what he, what the mayor's saying is, if you lower the standards, you're locking in now at a higher standard. Is that what you're saying?
What you're saying, they make any difference because, because.
The proposal you have is a proposal you have, you've got a recommendation from the, the DRB.
Yeah.
And so, you know, understand where I, where I was coming from, that you, you can't table something or put a moratorium while you enact higher standards unless.
I understood, I understood you ten minutes ago. I got it. Y'all can stop talking, I got it.
I, I do have a question though. I, I do have a question, though.
Yes, sir.
Is this, I'm gonna drag this to the end, turn it up. Is this, is it your legal opinion that we need to vote on this this evening?
It's my legal opinion that you can vote on this this evening, and I don't, I don't know that, that tabling it gets you in any advance-
Another reason I made a motion, so we could talk about it. Now that I understand it, I will draw my motion.
And my second is gonna also.
To be talked about. Since we can't discuss it before we make a motion.
Yeah. Those are the rules that we voted on.
Now, I'll make a motion, we approve DRB 229. With the recommendations of the DRB, of the DRC.
I second that.
Second by Councilman Copeland. That was live. Uh, recommendation on, on the floor is to approve DRB 229, five-star development of Alabama Incorporated. And all in favor?
Uh.
There wasn't any additional discussion?
Any others? No.
I didn't have any further discussion.
Those opposed?
Sixty-one, thank you.
Councilman Liddy didn't vote, didn't say anything. All right. Let's go to, uh, correspondence. Uh, a letter, uh, A from the, uh, letter request from the Kentucky Bourbon Festival. Do you have that there at the street closing?
Counsel?
Yeah? In, in time.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the Bourbon Festival request with the conditions that we always do with it satisfying the fire department and, uh, police.
Second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Williams. Discussion? Motion's on the floor by Councilman, uh, Simpson to approve the Kentucky Bourbon Festival. A letter of request was providing that the all standards and, uh, safety is met by the fire department and Chief Rick McCovens. All in favor?
Uh.
Those opposed? Motion's adopted. Thank you. Look at, uh, Fort Dane Memorial Run by Tyler Foster.
I think it's called Dog.
Dog, okay. I know, Mom, I don't have my glasses, I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, anybody read that?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the request for the Fort Dog Memorial Run for Tyler Foster.
I second.
Motion's on the floor to approve the Fort Dog Memorial Run for Tyler Foster, 521, 2016. Discussion? All in favor? Those opposed?
No.
Yes.
You said some-
I'm sorry.
Damn slow.
All right.
Sixty-one, thank you, sir.
All right. Motion's adopted. Uh, discussion of the Military Sister to the Naval Guantanamo Bay, Cuba with the city of Barstown. I'll entertain a motion. I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, consider this request to become a Military Sister City to Naval Station Guantanamo Bay, Cuba, and I'll yield the floor for a second. I have a second?
A second.
Second, Keith Copeland? I have a first and a second. Uh, discussion?
Uh, yeah, mayor, just a question. I got it.
Uh, Councilman Hayden, go ahead. You, are you, we're in discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Roland or Keisha, kind of, what this, what, what is this?
Okay. Um, well, you wanna let him ask this question first?
Well, no.
Okay.
Answer, uh, Hayden's. Well, my question was probably related to prayers. Go ahead.
All right. Um, we received these, I believe, at our last meeting, and we didn't discuss it. So, um, basically what it is, they're, they're asking that we become the Military Sister City for Guantanamo Bay in Cuba. Um, there's no, um, money's involved from the city. Um, they would post a, um, a sign saying that, you know, we are the sister city. Um, and the veterans, such as the ones in the room, or, um, uh, the post, or, um, individual donors would support, you know, the sign, pay for the sign and things of that nature. Um, I know that they went down recently, and, um, anybody knows about, um, Dr. Pete Truzoff? And, and his fellow mates went down. Um, and basically, it was to help individuals down there. I think they did like thirty to forty disability claims, and, um, that's a lot. That's a lot. You can't get that done on a monthly basis at one of the hospitals here. So, um, they, um, they helped out wherever they could. But this is symbolic, so to say, but also no expectation from, from the city. All we, all they're asking is that, you know, we say yes, we would like to be the Military Sister City, which would be good for, uh, veterans. Um, I mean, we have a lot of veterans out here. Um, we have veterans that served in the military, we have war veterans as myself. So I, I think it's a huge plus.
How, how was Barstown chosen? How, how did we do it?
Many cities were chosen, many cities. I mean, Campbellsville's asking for it. Um, there, there's several cities that are wanting to do it without, you know, the, going to their council and things of that nature. But, um, the formal way was to come to the council, ask them to approve. Um, let me give you a little information, I had to look up some things, but the, um, the Military Sister City concept is a, is an innovative and unique concept to bring attention and support for our veterans serving, um, the United States. Barstown City is unique, as we know, I mean, we've had a lot of fallen soldiers, um, Vietnam War, you know, just to name one. Um, and to start this program with the peace of a small town of America. And that's why they were pushing for Barstown, because we have so many accolades, you know, um, attached with our city anyway. The Naval Station in Guantanamo Bay, Cuba, the program has been given the go-ahead by the Base Command and waiting for approval for that, from the action of our city. Um, and there will be actually no cost once again. I just wanna stress that because I know that, um, that is a concern of everyone is cost. So, uh, a sign would be put up, and it'd be a thing of support, you know, um, trips to Cuba, which, you know, if a city official wanted to go, it'd be on them, of course. Um, but, you know, it's, um, it's, it's a volunteer type of work, you know? If, if you're connected with the military at all, it's like Red Cross, you know? You, you, you go places, you do for the Red Cross. Um, but with the military, I mean, there, there are a lot of things that we do after we get out of the military, and, um, I, I think that would be a great thing for us to be, um, named the Military Sister City.
Very good question. This is not gonna replace Sister City with-
Separate, totally different.
It's gonna be-
That has nothing to do with-
So-
No. You, you can't even compare it to-
No, I'm not, I'm not trying to compare. I mean, I'm a little confused, I didn't know-
Yeah.
You were trying to replace-
No, 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 no. They, they have two different missions, or just two different missions.
So this is additional, that will be added to what we already have?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay.
Problem I've got with this, according to the American Legion bylaws, I'm the first, first command at, uh, Post 121. There's no resolution been submitted to the national or the state level for approval of this program. If it does, he would have submitted that along with the resolution. A resolution clarifies and tells the mission of this sister city, and shows where the responsibility falls and who's responsible, and what can be said and what can't be said between the two cities and what's the responsibility live. That's where the resolution falls and has to be approved of the national and on state level and post level. So that has to be in effect before something like this, and I have heard nothing of this resolution. And I would, I would much like to see Mr. Truzoff put this resolution forth before we enter into an agreement with something without the approval of the national American Legion or the state American Legion. I see no approval from these people.
So you're saying that before, before, what, what, what is their post? One forty?
Forty-two.
Post forty-two? So you're telling me that, that if they're, if they're responsible that, they gotta have, they gotta go in front of the state and the national to get approval?
That's right. They have to go before the state and then go before the national, according to Section Seven of the Resolutions of the American Legion. And we understand the resolutions contain supporting documents and his intent should be clearly defined per the thing. A well-written resolution stands better chance of being favorable consideration and accounting if that resolution is, is not vaguely warranted. Um, resolutions are important, the national organization cannot act on these without being adopted by the National Convention or the National Executive Committee. If it seeks, post seeks to be a leader, then it should, uh, it can only sooth over the resolution process. So this is a good idea, I, I, I would support it if it's been approved of the national stuff. I, I don't think we're, I think we're getting into-
Somebody needs to call the National Party.
I think them documents should be presented along with the others, that, I mean, it's gotta have their approval before we approve.
Is this program run through the, the Military Sister City program? Is that run through American Legion?
I can find no program approved by the National Committee on this.
I think what it is, is Post Forty-two is sponsoring this military city, and what Councilman Buckman is saying is that, uh, in order for Post Forty-two to sponsor this, uh, Military Sister City, he has to have approval at the state level, then he has to have approval at the national level-
And then executive.
And then he's the executive level, and then he's gotta turn around and give those documents to us as a city to know, to make sure those, I guess you call them bylaws, are in order.
And it gives the guidelines and, and of what was expected of us as a city in the town, in, in contradiction with the Guantanamo Bay. I mean, where do we stand, what we, what's it doing for us? Can other people intercede in it? I mean, there's a, it's a debate.
I think we can raise this whole word to our city, sir.
No, I think-
I think, I'd like to make those some table.
I think it should be tabled, but that whole-
Tabled until more documents are set forth.
To Pete Truzoff is the one that whole word has to go to. I have to Pete Truzoff. Okay, so, uh, I, I understand what you're saying, and, uh, I don't have a problem with that. Uh, your, your source, you said Section Seven of what?
Section Seven, okay.
Is this from handbook?
Yes.
From, um, American Legion handbook? It was all American Legions have that?
Yes.
So you, so you should have one too?
I do.
I'm gonna have a first and a second.
First and, uh, I have a first and a second. Just based on the fact that, uh, there appears to be some, uh, information we need to add, uh, I'm gonna withdraw my motion and ask that we table it so that, uh, we can get with the sponsors to get the necessary resolutions approved, and then come back to the council so we can act on it. So is that your, is that your new motion?
Yes.
Well, he's just withdrawing, he's just withdrawing.
And he got reasons for do that.
So now, uh, I need a motion regarding, uh, regarding this Military Sister City?
Now, he's withdrawing, who's second?
Councilman Copeland.
Okay, yes. So she has to withdraw hers.
Yeah, well, you wanna withdraw your second to that?
I'll withdraw my second.
So now there is no motion, and if you want to leave it on your agenda for later, you can do that, I don't think you have to make a bar to table it.
I will just, we'll go to- All right, we'll go to, uh, number D, 2016 Annual Run for Health, uh, of it, and it's six eighteen, 2016. So you guys see that? When you're ready, I'll entertain a motion regarding the run on six eighteen, 2016. Mayor, if I'm in order, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the River Cities Races Run for the Health of It. Um, I forgot the date, apologize. Six eighteen, 2016. Six eighteen, 2016. Now yield the floor for a second.
I'll second.
Uh, motion's on the floor to approve the, uh, 2016 Annual Run for the Health of It on six eighteen, 2016. Discussion? Do you wanna make, do you wanna have any of that, uh? With all of the- Like the police and all that? Correct, most certainly. Okay. We add, we wanna add that to that? All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Okay, motion's adopted, thank you. Okay. Review of the minutes of, uh, three twenty-two, 2016. I guess you guys had a, a chance to review those, uh, since Thursday, so, uh, I'll approve those by unanimous consent. Motion's adopted, thank you. Uh, there's no financial report, there's no ordinances, uh, reports from the staff and committees, we're going to, uh-
The Electric and Cable TV Committee meeting minutes have not been submitted to me, so unfortunately, were, they were not available for review. So I'll have those, um, sent out later on, once I get those. Cable TV programming, I have a chance to submit those to you in paper tonight, um, and then Code Enforcement Board meeting held yesterday? No, four seven, last week. Four seven of 2016. And Chairman, uh, Sims is here, did you wanna report on it? I don't have the minutes just yet, but I can certainly send them out. They'll be ready tomorrow. Okay, I'll do that.
What'd you say about cable TV? You said you did one?
I handed it out to you tonight.
You did?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Oh.
That's mine.
Thank you, I have mine, put mine in.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're gonna move forward?
Yes, sir.
All right, is that okay with you guys? All right. Uh, I'm finishing, uh, business, the municipal order M 2016 dash one, the personnel policy.
Still on there.
Still on there. Okay. Pass that one. Number twelve. Uh, City Council member comments, the donation policy.
No, sir, we got new business. We're on ten Nelson County Community Clinic.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
That's still under unfinished business. We might be wanting to-
No, we just do that later?
All right. We'll come back to it.
Later.
I know, we'll come back to it, I'm afraid we'd like to.
Do that?
So now we're under new business.
Can I ask a question? So, they have, um, when is the event? I see April the twenty-second, okay, April twenty-second is the art auction, and then, so are they asking for both of them, or just, are they asking us to help with both of them? I see a five K walk run, then I see a dinner and art auction, but the dinner with art auction is April the twenty-second. So if we do not do anything, we wouldn't be supporting them, right?
You just said not, you submitted, you mean you approved tonight the run for the health of it?
Right. Oh, we're, we're not on, um, I thought we were on Nelson County Community Clinic, sorry.
I am. And the run for the health of it was the run.
That was part of it.
That, that's already been approved, and so it's still in a situation of asking for donations.
Right.
That's why it's un, under unfinished business.
And, and Keisha, I was suggesting that we, once we look at this number twelve donation policy requirement-
Right.
Then we can back up and, if we decide something on under twelve, then we can back up, and it would be, make it cleaner, I think, to talk about.
New business.
New business, right. Where number eleven, new business, reappointments, uh, be one Keith West to Spalding Hall Historical Committee for two years, expires before one, 2016. I have a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to approve Keith West for the new term for the Spalding Hall Historical Committee.
I'll second it. Second, discussion? No discussion, motion on the floor to approve Keith West as Spalding Hall Historical Committee for another two-year term to expire before one, 2016. All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed?
It won't expire until 2018, sir.
Yes, 2018, I'm sorry.
That's all.
Better pray. Okay, the, uh, M 2016 oh five tax moratorium assessment, tax assessment moratorium on Okay, the M 2016-05 Tax Moratorium Assessment, Tax Assessment Moratorium on 202 South 3rd Street.
A municipal order accepting the application for a tax assessment moratorium certificate for the property located at 202 South 3rd Street, Bardstown, Kentucky. Being ordered by the City Council of the City of Bardstown, Kentucky, Section 1, that the application for assessment moratorium certificate for the property located at 202 South 3rd Street, Bardstown, Kentucky, is hereby accepted and further expressing the city's intent to grant an assessment moratorium to the owner of said property upon compliance with the city's property assessment and reassessment moratoriums as defined in KRS Chapter 99.595 at SEEC. Section 2, that this order shall take effect and be in full force when passed and recorded according to law.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, if I'm in order?
Mm-hmm.
I move to accept municipal order number M 2016-05, this application for tax assessment moratorium certificate for the property located at 202 South 3rd Street. And I yield the floor for a second.
Sir, have a second? Second by Councilman Buckman, discussion? Motion's on the floor to approve the M 2016-05 Tax Assessment Moratorium on 202 South 3rd Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? As, motion's adopted. We'll go to C, it's the Kentucky League of Cities Official Academy. I guess Councilman Buckman, you have the floor?
I had asked Barbie to put this on the agenda. It's the Kentucky League of Cities Official Academy, number 2, and it's simply stated what they have. I don't know if everyone received an email from Robin at KLC in regards to we hadn't registered or what have you. The topics are on there, but they also have a young lady speaking, and it seems like very good information to bring back to the city. However, there it is. I mean, it's April 27th, or excuse me, the 24th, I believe. I think the dates were wrong on there.
This came, I took a picture of the-
27th through the 29th?
It says that, but I thought we received an email, maybe, maybe 27th through 29th.
That's like a Thursday, Friday.
Okay. So we need to, once again, see if we're going to attend this, if anybody wants to go, and we would need to vote on it, so, there it is.
I think if anybody wants to go to it, they need to come into the mayor's office and attempt to be, and then we can decide.
Also.
So-
So what, I mean, to do that, did you, did you wanna go, or I mean, how did you wanna do that?
When we've gone, we've been getting the same discussion, when we've gone to these in the past, the question's, how do we pay for it? Because we don't have a line item for it, we understand.
You come in and it's probably out of your contingency fund, until we redo this budget.
Hopefully, we're gonna be able to get all this straightened out next year.
Sure. But you gotta, you gotta be able to, you should come into the office, tell me who you, that you wanna go, then we know how much it's, how much it's gonna cost.
So we all were here.
Then once, then once it's, then once it's revised what the cost is, if you wanna vote on it, that's fine.
You had some kind of price of policy.
Well, okay, let me ask another question, and because this is the 27th through the 29th.
It's, well, I don't think nobody has to stay down overnight.
No, we don't have to stay overnight, but we have to pay for the registration and say that we're coming.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the cost for any councilman who wants to go to this City's Official Academy on April 27th, 29th, for the registration.
Okay, right.
And we can pay for it out of, if we have any money in our contingency fund, we pay for it out of our contingency fund.
I'll start again, motion.
I'm sorry, I can't second.
Bill?
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, 26 of our revenues and expenses, we have a travel and conference expense line, wouldn't that be in that?
Is that under administration?
I think we have used that in the past, out of fact, we-
It's under revenue and expenses, and I get lost, I start knowing.
We have used-
I take that back, I'm in the wrong account, but. Tracy told me it's in there someplace.
Each department has their travel expenses, or training, or whatever, each department, the chief, he knows how much training his people is gonna have, Ledger does, each department has that.
So we fall under admin?
Yes.
Well, there's gotta be an admin line for that, too.
They have one, too.
But anyway, that's fine.
I know it's in the past, Councilman Buckman, we already had a line item, really, we didn't use the line item contingent fund when we went to the conference. I mean, we always use it out of the budget under another line item, wasn't the line item under contingent fund. I just want to clarify that.
I don't know, when I was on the council wanting to go, I always went into the office and said, "I wanna go," and they booked it and done it, so I didn't know where it was.
I remember when we started.
We, I just wanna say something, since we are talking about, the next item is travel policy, education.
Now, we're in a discussion on-
I understand that, but what I'm saying is that we made a motion only for registration, and if we're gonna do things right, then it needs to be registration and mileage, even wherever we're going. It, you know, if you don't take it, that's fine, but it should be registration and mileage. I'm just, if we wanna be correct about it.
I will amend my motion to include mileage, registration and mileage, and whatever the spending.
I'm sorry.
There's an amendment to his, to the motion, to bill that they said that you were the one-
Registration being mileage.
Registration and mileage, and you get that regardless, if you, if you go to a Kentucky League of Cities Sponsored Official Academy, then you do get your mileage.
Of course, I'm, we still on questions, I mean, what, how much you gonna pay for mileage? Put me, give me something, something we can have on record, but-
It's 54 cents.
It's 54 cents.
54 cents.
It's 54 cents.
Either that's set by the federal or whatever.
It's ours.
Well, I just wanna make sure that we have it on records and tell us someone trying to make up something. So we do have a problem with that, you know?
We do?
We do.
We do.
I don't think anybody's made up. Let's go. Have a motion, first and second, and then amended.
An amended motion.
Okay, so motion's on the, on the floor to approve the registration and mileage at 54 cents even to the Kentucky League of Cities Official Academy. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Motion's adopted. Now we can go to D, Travel Policy, Education, and Reimbursement for the Council.
Oh, okay. So we were discussing travel expenses, reimbursement, so I called Kentucky League of City and got some examples. I had given them to Barbie late to upload, but we have them. And they're just examples and guidelines of how, they've already drawn up the information, and that we can use these as our policy. They have templates in here, they also have what other cities are using, you know, as their related expenses or guideline. I don't know if you were able to look at it, it was loaded a little earlier today, but it is pretty good information, and they already have it done for you, unless we want to sit here and try to create one ourselves, but, you know, it is the Kentucky League of City, and nothing that they cut out is going to harm our city. They're pretty basic guidelines, and they're already drawn up for us, so.
And Keisha, a question, so this, and I guess we're kinda thinking, we're all kinda talking about when we do the budget next year, a budgeting, and if this would all kinda fall in with that, of a policy and a, yeah, so, you agree? Thanks.
So whenever we decide on that, as far as making policy at this time, on that, that's just a discussion point, so.
We've had discussion after the last meeting, when we were churning around, and basically every meeting, it seems like we're having this as being the topic. We went the next day, and I suggested that there be a travel policy adopted. What I would suggest is at the next working session, that, and Barbie's already said that maybe what we could do is do a draft, you know, travel policy for y'all to discuss at the next working session, and then be ready for adoption. The other thing that we talked about is trying to somehow make it fair in terms of the money. If you have, understand what I'm saying here, if you have an overall budget, and I'm gonna pick on Councilman Williams, he, the first, you know, he gets $10,000, and he comes first, and he wants to do, go to Hawaii, which I don't blame him, he may take up a lot of the budget and not leave a lot left. So, we battered around, and one of the things that I thought of was to do a per council, each person has a budget, and if you can do 20 conferences with that budget, do 20. If you can do one, do one, but there would be criteria that this was covered, this would be covered, this would be covered, and then you would have a line item, you know, when everybody talks about a line item, and then all you all are really talking about, and I think you should try to simplify that, too, is whether something is worthy of being considered under the travel policy. I think maybe that ought to be referred to committee or something like that. I just think that redoing that every meeting is kind of a waste of effort and time, and it makes it a little personal, quite frankly, and I think that we should try to make it a little more businesslike, and so that was my suggestion. If that sounds good to you all, I think we can do that at the next work session.
You read my mind.
It's for May the 3rd, would be the next working. It won't be the next meeting, it'll be May 3rd.
Yeah, working session, yes.
Right.
Oh, shut up. Let's move on, we go to C.
One more, sir.
What's on?
D, Councilman Buckman.
E?
D, yes.
Oh, yes, okay, for the fourth time, I'm coming to you. Reimbursement request for the Kentucky Black Caucus Leo Conference, I know there was some brief discussion in regards to an email that was sent out, but I'm bringing it back to you because, of course, like I had stated before, the agenda wasn't completed, and I also sent you a Kentucky Black Caucus letter stating, it was a welcome letter, and it did state that it was preservation. The meeting overall, it was about preservation. The minute one was economic development and education, but that was from our legislators. Those are legislators that come in and explain it. The workshops were about that, and it was stated African-American heritage, but it was about preservation. If you know Craig Potts, he's Preservation Heritage Council. Jim Turner, he's Preservation Kentucky Heritage Council. Aquin Burton, he is the Kentucky Arts Center, and that is heritage, African art, and preservation. So I was the moderator for that session, it stayed pretty full because that's what people wanna hear. But moreover, I was able to bring out about our city. We have a very unique city, we have a block that has three historic facilities. Coach Rowe knows exactly what I'm talking about, one is Archer. But it gives information in reference to taxes, how to apply for these grants. By going to Washington DC, I was able to link up with a federal agency that has money available, so that these can be taken care of, and not just the African-American buildings that, you know, have no system code enforcement, but also many of structures that everyone sees here in town. So that trip was very well worthwhile, but this trip was also, because Craig Potts was able to say, "Hey, you know what? Block it, make it a whole block, and bring it in as a cumbersome so that we can get the grant money, or we can apply for federal money." So without that, I wouldn't have known. We didn't have a representative up there. Councilman Roland Rhodes was not able to go, Councilman Francis Lydian was not able to go, Councilman Simpson didn't wanna go, Councilman Buckman didn't wanna go, and Councilman Hagan said he could not go. So I was a lone person up there. So what I'm asking is that you reconsider this with the information that you have now. It was said in the emails that this didn't have anything to do with city business, but it did have something to do with city business. We have four buildings in one block that need help. One's the old schoolhouse, the black schoolhouse. So, I mean, these, this is needed. I was the representative.
Well, I've already, okay, I've already gone on record as saying that attendance at an event like this is educational, and I feel like it's, it's worthy of being reimbursable. I've stated that before, and I'll state that position again, just so everybody knows.
Well, can somebody make a motion regarding the exact dollar amount and-
I've got a comment for it, I'm gonna respond to her saying that I didn't wanna go. I refuse to support the Kentucky Black Caucus, they're 501 to start with, and they're a racist, biased group, their bylaws state it's only for black politicians. A white politician cannot join that organization, they are not accepted in the organization.
Yes, a white-
Oh, excuse me, no, you want the bylaws, you need to reach the bylaws, only way I can join is an honorary member who had done something, exemplary something for the black community, but you have no voting rights, and you can be a token member. That's it. That's a, even presidential elect Ben Carson said Congressional Black Caucus is a racist. And that's fine, you can, you can use that organization, and it's a better for the black politician, and that's okay, but I'm not gonna use the taxpayer's money to support.
I disagree with you, Buckman.
Well, that's your opinion, but that's my opinion.
I do a lot of reading.
Yeah, I do a lot of reading, too.
And that's the first time I've heard you say something negative about this organization.
She's the one brought it up, she wanted us to pay for it.
Let's move on, I disagree with you, let's move on.
Okay.
Okay, I disagree with you.
Okay.
Well, I'll go ahead, wait a minute, I just wanna say one more thing. You know, you have your opinion, Councilman Buckman.
I'm gonna read your bylaws.
Are you reading Congressional bylaw, or are you reading Kentucky Black Caucus?
Out of order, stop, out of order. We gotta, I want a motion, 'cause you're gonna say something, everybody's gonna say something.
I think I have a right to address that.
No, not right here.
If you're calling it a racist, and bigotry, and things of that nature, that's not right.
Miss Buckman, you're, you're wanting to start an argument.
I'm not wanting to start, I want to discuss.
Well, let's do this, let's have, let's have a motion and see where people stand on this, because I don't think anybody's gonna convince anybody otherwise here today, but-
No.
Have a, have a motion with an amount, and then let people vote and discuss on that.
Okay, is there, is there a motion? If there is a motion, then we need a dollar amount.
The dollar amount is $439.72. $214 for hotel expense, $225.72, that was mileage, a 54 cent amount.
Did you, did you have those receipts?
The one's attached.
I sent it to Barbie.
It's on there?
Yeah.
The one's attached.
I thought-
$439.72.
I thought in your original, in your original receipts that you had, I thought that that was, had already been taken care of in the, in the first thousand dollars.
No, this is separate.
Oh, this is for murder.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Hold on one second, I'm sorry, it was, let me make sure I got this right. So that total is 504, sorry about that.
Is that even?
Yeah.
Well, I wanna address what your comment was, that, I'm trying to see about getting all these grants and things for the people. As I said at the last meeting, the one that should go is the one that's over that and is talking to our people every day. I'm sure you're out there with a lot, and I know I am, too, but she's the one that's hard to be able to communicate with the people, and if we were gonna send somebody, I think that's who we ought to send, and that's my opinion.
Okay, and to address that, we did ask Rashad to go, this Jen is to go, she had a family emergency that she needed to attend to, but this is educational, too, so not only are we saying that Rashad should go, yes, of course she should go, but also other council members should go and be informative as well, that's what we do.
Well, if all of us go to every program that League of Cities has, the majority of those, and we talked about it here tonight, is, is, most of those run anywhere from $300 to $400 just for the, just for the, to sign up. for the, just for the, to sign up. Well, you look around here and if all of us go to all of those, we gonna be throwing a whole lot of our constituents' money into that that we're not gonna have for this budget that we're coming up with and I think we gonna have a big discussion over this budget before it's over with. So I think we need to be looking, us conserving as well as telling the employees that, no, we don't want that pick on the truck, we want something else. So I think we need to look at how we spend their money. Now, these conventions, these are not cheap, it's just like you said there, the other night, we kept talking about $65. Now that $65 is up there to $400, $500. So that's where I'm coming from. Now, if in this particular case, this person that we've got up here, in my opinion, still feel like that that's who ought to go. They couldn't go to this one, maybe they can go to that.
Okay, well, I will address that. At the last meeting, you said it was $1,000, which it wasn't, it was $504 and Rashay was asked to go, but any of us could have went, anyone could have went. What would your thing been if Coach Rowe wanted to go? You know, but it's Copeland that wants to go. But that's fine and that is your opinion, but it's about education, it's about training and yes, we should be careful of the taxpayers' money also, but that is in the budget, a contingency fund is in the budget. We didn't have a problem with saying we were gonna go to Kentucky League of Cities.
There was a lot to gain at July.
And there's a lot to gain at the Kentucky Black Caucus.
Well, we still need a motion.
Mayor, comment, order. Well, let me, I'll touch on Bobby's there. Rashay is the one that should go, she is the one that these grants come through, she's the one that writes these grants, she is a grant writer. She, and these grants have to go through her, they have to be signed by her and approved by her and then brought to the council. And I'll leave it at that, so the motion, Councilwoman Williams, go right ahead.
Okay, my motion is that we reimburse Councilman Copeland $439.72 for attendance at the Kentucky Black Caucus of Local elected officials that was held in Murray, Kentucky.
It was $504.
Oh, how much was it?
$504.
$504.
$504 even.
I meant at the $504 even.
And that was mileage in hotel.
Registration.
And registration, I'm sorry.
I have a motion.
Yeah, discussion.
Yeah, I have something to say. I said that at the last meeting, I think it's, we need to train, we need to go out and train more, I applaud it. Councilman wants to go out and go to training and conferences and I think it's silly for the six of us to judge what a councilman wants to go to on training. All of us are elected officials, we're all adults, we all know what training is, we all know what training we need, and I hope that when we develop this policy for next year that we stop this, the six of us trying to decide what the seventh person should be training on. We're all adults, we all know what training we need, we can make those decisions on our own. And I, Tim talked about having each councilperson have so much money and then let that councilperson go to whatever training they want to go to. They're elected to do these things, we shouldn't be all trying to decide what one person should do, I think it's silly. I'm embarrassed to be part of it.
And I give it to Fred. I'm gonna put myself in and all the rest of councilmembers, we do need some knowledge. I mean, look what we've been going through for the last six months. We need a hell of a lot of knowledge. Y'all go to meetings, they got training every week. All right.
Any other discussions, call for a question. Motion is on the floor to approve Ms. Councilman Copeland's $504, $504 reimbursement fees from the KDC Leo reimbursement.
And I think Councilman Copeland needs to abstain, yes, because it's actually benefits her personally.
I agree, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Both are opposed.
Let's continue on. Well, City Councilman comments, donation policy requirements.
I'll take that over, Mayor. This grew out of our discussion last, at the last meeting when we were looking at the request from the Nelson County Community Clinic and I suggested we have a more formal policy for donation requests and with Barbie's help, or I guess with my input, and she developed this municipal order which effectively mirrors the Kentucky League of Cities recommendations for donations and then accompanying that is a donation request application. You've all read it, of course, it's on your iPads. So set this to formalize the policy where someone wants the city to donate, they fill out this form, elicit or a councilman to be the sponsor for it and then bring it to the council and lobby for it, if you will, and then we vote on it. And then it has a follow-up policy. So I guess what I'm asking for, I'm prepared to make a motion, we adopt this, and if we do, then we can go back and look at this community clinic request and they could use this application.
So you're making a motion?
So I'll make a, I'll make a motion and we can, I'll make a motion to approve municipal order number M 2016-06 and the accompanying form.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, as long as I didn't ask the first question.
All right, so I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Hagan, second by Councilman Williams, and yes, you have the first question.
Okay. So, you know, we give someone a donation, are they expected to come back to the council and give a report or can they just produce receipts? I remember reading that, I'm just getting clarification.
Well, it says, use funds will be audited by the city of Barstown in a five-month period. So we would expect them, yes, to come back, so they had to bring us something for us to audit, yes.
No different than the U.S., like the U.S. Commission, they have their balance sheet which is not, what, $3,000 of what we normally give, or $1,500, so I guess, we get 15, county gets 15, and yes, I would expect them to come back and say, what did you do with it? Here's the money, it's taxpayers' money.
Yeah, I just asked, and players protection, so.
All in favor?
Can I introduce something real quick, please, just real quick? So whenever, because it'll come to the city first, a donation request, so could I ask that when a donation comes into the city, that we respond immediately with the application and ask them to follow up through the application because that will instruct them, and I'll give them a list of every one of your names and phone numbers, so for the sponsorship of that application, they will have to contact you first. Because when that application comes back to us and they show me that they've contacted the person who will sponsor the bill or sponsor the request, then I will give you a call to make sure that that has been something that you've been addressed.
I'll say two-minute call, can you leave my name open?
No, sir, I'm sorry, I can't. You recognize all the constituents.
Will it be, they can pick it up though, right? When they come in and say they can pick it up.
Oh, yes, but most of the time, as you can see, letters come into us in regard to the mayor and the city council. So instead of bringing that letter to the council, I'm asking that you allow us the opportunity to respond immediately to that request with this application process and the municipal order so that they understand what they have to do in order to bring it to the council, okay? Just want to make sure, because I don't want to have a time lapse in regard to their request and it coming to you all. There's a motion.
Motion on the floor for municipal order M 2016-06. It is the donation policy for the city council. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's adopted.
And that's by me, Mayor, so that gets us back to the number 10B Nelson County Community Clinic.
Right.
So now Barbie can supply them with this application and they can.
Okay, thank you, I will take your.
Oh, no, no, this is just municipal.
Are we still in council comments?
No.
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Did anybody else have anything to say? I just want to talk about the trip to Washington DC. I know Councilman Hagan wanted to hear about it and so I just wanted to thank you for the ones that approved for me to go, I truly appreciate it. It was time well spent, able to connect and showcase Barstown one more time. After speaking to different departments here in Barstown, they were elated that I was able to go up there, but the money that they were advocating for, this was to advocate, so the money that they were advocating for actually comes back to our city in grant forms and actually Rashay Jennings had already submitted her application for grant funds and so I'm sure that that will go through fine, but, you know, those funds are really important to the state of Kentucky and to our community because we're able to do different things with it, whether it's making a video, whether it's doing digs or travel, you know. So I just wanted to thank you and Craig Potts said that he thanks you as well. But I did have one more comment. I know that, I'm trying to figure out, did the safety committee meet or, I know when the fire department was going through and they wanted to restructure or what have you, we were brought in and we talked about it and things of that nature, but I was, I read something in Kentucky Standard today about the restructure for the police department. So I just want to know, was this something that was ongoing or, I just read it in the newspaper, so I'm being fair, but I just read it in the newspaper and, so I just kind of wanted to know from everyone and then also Chief McCovens, I was just trying to know, you know, did you support this restructure because?
Excuse me, you got a word?
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll shut that down right now.
All right, so.
All right, let's move on to the cemetery deeds, please, number 13. We have Frances Van Dusen, Zachary Martinez, Ryan and Melina Hall, Margaret.
Mayor, can we back back up?
Lily Foster, and we also have additional one is Karen.
Korea.
Korea Crowe. I'll accept them, what is it?
We still had city council comments.
I'll adopt a motion to approve these cemetery deeds for these individuals.
Put that on record.
And if there's no objections, like unanimous consent, so, thank you. Let's go to number 14, announcements. We'll offer congratulations to Roy Kersinger of Public Works, 20 years, 20-year anniversary. Tim Simpson, Police Department, 20-year anniversary. And since there's no objections, I'll adopt the motion.
There is an objection.
There is?
Yeah, I have an objection. I'd like to hear what these two people have to say.
All right, go right ahead.
Well, first of all, the Councilwoman Copeland asked if anybody had said anything comments and I think, but if, I understand what you're saying, Mayor, that that was administrative, that's administrative policy and that is true, that is within your administrative, as we found out with the fire department, that's within your administrative authority, but is there something additionally that you wanted to comment on? Because I think that that's, I think you're within your rights to do that.
Well, I was just asking about the restructure because he was, kept us abreast of everything when it was the fire department and we didn't know anything about the restructure of the police department and I understand that Kentucky League of Cities was contacted, but what does that impact? Is there an impact to the budget? I mean, you know, you need so many sergeants and what have you, what does that do to the budget? I mean, you have, you kept us informed on the fire department.
You're not being approved for this four sergeants position, you already voted and approved for that.
For the police department?
Yes, for the.
Okay, well, still.
Any change to the personnel and the personnel policies would have to come back before the council. Would have to come back before the council, but in terms of, the mayor has the authority, the executive authority to address the personnel and within the positions that are already established, he has the ability to.
And I understand what you're saying, Tim, I just, you know, I thought we were gonna be very transparent and so we get hit in the face with a Kentucky Standard article breaking news today without a phone call.
Ms. Copeland, you say that it's not transparent, I don't see.
I'm not saying that you weren't transparent.
Your duty under the law, in the Kentucky League of Cities, your duty under the law is two things, and hear me out.
Okay.
It's ordinances and budget.
Okay.
So asking questions within the administration, you know, I invite you to come up every day. I've had four appointments with you.
I called you and you're gonna need to answer your phone, you don't answer your phone.
I have four appointments and you've canceled two.
I have not canceled two appointments.
I'm really in this discussion?
Please do.
I have a comment, I mean, he want to hear my comment. I hear a couple of language used by city attorney and mayor, administrative decision. Kentucky League of Cities official legal handbook, Edition 215, indicate majority council can override mayor regulation. So I want to let you know, because I've been hearing that word all the time, administrative decision. If you read that law, council members can override the mayor regulation administrative issue. And my next question, you asked me a question a few minutes ago, you know, I use it by the standard and I did not get the standard and also I'm on a safety committee meeting and when you mention it, that is new to me, I don't know anything about it, that's all I have to say.
Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
I've already done that.
Can we have a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.